Well, good morning, everyone. Alberto Sannival, Senior Director of Community and Government Relations for UC Irvine. Welcome to Wake Up Newport. We've got a great program this morning, a wonderful speaker, and a good friend. But before we get to the supervisor, I think we're going to call up Steve to welcome everyone.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Welcome to Wake Up Newport, May edition, May 22. Can you believe it? How fast things are going this year? It'll be in the summer pretty soon. So I'm Steve Rosansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. And as usual, I'd like to introduce a few of the dignitaries that have joined us this morning. So with us, in addition to the supervisor, we have our Assistant City Manager, Tara Finnegan. Tara, good morning. You know, I usually do this beforehand, so I'm searching around the room. Well, we have some people running for office. I'm going to introduce them. So we have Diane Harkey. Diane's running for supervisor, Fifth District, which we have just entered newly, so we'll be in the Fifth District. Robin Grant, my sister and city council candidate. I don't know, you're getting a bigger applause these days than I am. That wasn't supposed to happen that way. Gerald Capel's here. Gerald, raise your hand. He's on the civil service board.
Foundation.
Foundation. Oh, that's right, the Library Foundation. I'm sorry. And they generously allow us to use this room here. Looking forward to the new lecture hall that's going to be built just adjacent a couple of years. Maybe we'll move in there. Yeah, yeah. And I think that's about it. I'm going to point out Seymour Beak. Seymour, he shows up every so often. He's the owner of the Balboa Island Ferry. Everybody knows the ferry. Welcome, Seymour.
Howard Herzog.
I know, I'm scratching. Howard Herzog's right in front of you, civil service board. Howard's in the civil service board. So I think that's, hopefully I got them all. I don't know. How about Carol back there with the Balboa Bay Resort? She's aces in my book. She's going to get us a good date for our upcoming fire and, sorry, not economic forecast in October. So thank you all for coming. I'll have some closing remarks, and I'll update you on some of the things that we're doing. But we want to get right into our program. So Alberto, why don't you come up and introduce our speaker?
But the biggest dignitary is Steve himself, right? Former mayor. All right. This morning, we've got Orange County Supervisor Lisa Bartlett, who was born and raised in Southern California, has been a resident of South Orange County for over 30 years. She began her career in public service when she was first elected to the Dana Point City Council in 2006. During her term on the city council, she served as both mayor and mayor pro tem. Supervisor Bartlett was elected to the Orange County Board of Supervisors in 2014 and was reelected in 2018 to represent the fabulous Fifth District. She served as chairwoman on the board in 2016 and again in 2019. In both her public and private life, Supervisor Bartlett is known for supporting projects she believes will improve economic development, property values, and overall quality of life for Orange County residents, a big fan of P3 projects. She brings that prolific vision to the Fifth District and Orange County at large and is a strong proponent of fiscal responsibility, accountability, and greater transparency in government. She serves on a number of boards, including OCTA, Orange County Fire Authority, the Transportation Corridor Agency, South Coast Air Quality Management District. She earned a bachelor's degree in finance, a master's degree in business administration, and became a certified project management professional as well as a licensed real estate broker. Ladies and gentlemen, help me welcome Supervisor Lisa Bartlett.
Well, good morning, everyone. It's an honor and a privilege to be here today. And thank you to Steve Rosansky and the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce for hosting this morning. So good morning, everyone. If you don't know me, I'm Lisa Bartlett, the Orange County Supervisor for the fabulous Fifth District. And I'm happy to say that now we've finished redistricting, which is effective January the 6th, and Newport Beach is now in the Fifth District. So as your new supervisor, it's great to be here today and have an opportunity to talk about some of the issues that I know are really important to Newport Beach. Since becoming your supervisor, I've really enjoyed getting to know everybody out in the community and having the opportunity to meet with a lot of the different stakeholders that you have here in Newport Beach and getting a feel for and understanding all of the issues because every city is vastly different. We have 34 cities in Orange County, and every city is, they're like children, they're all different. And so getting to know all of the things that are important to all of you here in Newport, whether you're a resident or a business owner, has been really important for me. And talking to Steve this morning, he now realizes we have a county events budget. I've always been very active in the Fifth District and very helpful to all of the chambers of commerce and the business community in sponsoring a lot of the key events that help highlight each city. So I was a sponsor for the Newport Beach Police Appreciation Breakfast that was held a short time ago, and there to support the fine men and women who do a great job in protecting your city. And then later this month, I'll be sponsoring and attending the Mayor's Dinner and the 2022 State of the City address. Recently, I had the opportunity to appoint a representative from Newport Beach to the Orange County Historical Commission, and I was pleased to choose a resident right here in your community. It can be regional, but we found a great person right here in Newport Beach, and I'm probably not going to pronounce his last name right. It's Bernie Svalstad. Is that correct? He's president of the Newport Beach Historical Society, and I had an opportunity to talk to him, and he just has a wealth of knowledge and a passion for all things historical. And I know he'll do a great job on our Orange County Historical Commission. So at this point, I'd like to give you a brief update about what's going on at our county airport, John Wayne Airport. As you know, the county has two major assets, and they are both in the fabulous Fifth District. So we have Dana Point Harbor, which is going through a $400 million revitalization, and then we have John Wayne Airport. And during the COVID pandemic, it really had a devastating effect on travel and the tourism industry. I mean, we literally went from millions of passengers to almost zero overnight when the industries were kind of shut down one by one, whether it was restaurants for a time being or, you know, for travel. And it was really strange to see the airport as kind of a ghost town when we were at the height of COVID. But we never lost sight of our priorities, and we continue to implement all of the health and safety initiatives to reinforce a really superior guest experience. So now that we're back pulling out of, hopefully out of the COVID pandemic, flights are almost back to normal again. If you do travel, though, frequently, you'll see that some of the flights, and it's around the United States, you'll see some cancellations. And it doesn't have to do with the COVID pandemic at all. It just has to do with staffing. They're having a tough time getting pilots and flight attendants. So if you do travel, plan ahead and just be, plan to be very flexible because you could end up with a canceled flight or getting stuck somewhere. But at the airport, we partnered with Hoag Health Services to open up two flywell clinics right at the airport. And the clinics serve passengers pre and post security, and they provide onsite health services by licensed professionals. They can treat minor illnesses and injuries. Hopefully, you won't have any of those at the airport, but if you do, we've got these available for you. They provide telehealth consultations, provide screenings and prescriptions, and address any travel sickness. Also, relative to like greener operations, there is an increasing urgency for public entities to reduce air emissions through changing paradigms and improved infrastructure. And I know that all too well when, and I just rolled off the board of the Air Quality Management District, but it was a real experience to be on that board for a couple of years. They've done a lot to improve air quality over time in, you know, in the South Coast Air Quality Basin. I'll give you one example. Before I got into elected office, I was in the private sector for 16 years as a corporate executive. And I remember telling one of the applicants one day who was applying for legal secretary, and I was going to interview her, "When you get off the freeway, just turn towards the mountains and then, you know, come up and we're on this street." And she calls me and she said, "I'm off the freeway and I don't see any mountains." The air quality in the 80s was honestly so bad in the basin, you couldn't see the Saddleback Mountains. So fast forward to today, you get off the freeway, you know exactly where the mountains are. So, you know, the Air Quality Management District, while I don't always agree with some of the positions they take and some of the votes, they have done a lot to improve air quality over the decades in our air basin. So for them, we're all breathing cleaner air. So for the airport, talking about greener operations, we're providing cleaner electricity to replace the hydrocarbon-fueled engines and equipment, providing charging stations for electric vehicles, replacing hydrocarbon-fueled shuttle buses with zero-emission buses, developing the corresponding bus charging grid, and implementing electrical upgrades and infrastructure projects that increase efficiency and reduce electricity demand. So we just want to be a really good partner with the environment, and John Wayne Airport and the staff there have really done a marvelous job. And whatever they can do to replace older equipment that takes up a lot of time or fuel, you know, and looking towards more greener implementation of things, they've really done a great job, and I applaud their efforts. So to address some of the issues that they want to achieve and address at the airport, they received $3.1 million in grant funds, and they purchased three new electric shuttle buses recently. The buses replaced the older compressed natural gas buses and will certainly help reduce our impact on the environment. To be a good neighbor, John Wayne isn't the only county asset, but rather an asset for the entire community and the region. And we always strive to be a good partner, and we've implemented certain measures in an effort to be an even better neighbor and a seamless partner in the community. And some of those endeavors include a new flight tracking system called WebTrack. So if you haven't logged on to that yet, take a look at it. It's intended to streamline the process for county staff and the general public when trying to track and find data about aircraft. So what it's really great for is if you get any overhead flights, and I know Newport is impacted, it's, you know, with the changes at the federal level, you've got the flight paths that are very narrow now and in more narrow band because there's greater GPS capability. But for the people underneath that very narrow band, it can get very noisy at times. And we've done everything we can relative to the airport and the takeoffs and landings, but we're now having to work also with other airports because, as you know, it's not just John Wayne Airport. We get a lot of cross-traffic from San Diego, from Ontario, Long Beach, LAX. And so then you have private aircraft as well. So we've got a couple of things in place to try to have everyone be a good neighbor because there's nothing worse than getting woken up at 7:15 in the morning or 7:02 when the flights take off at 7:00, and you have that noise that's overhead. So the WebTrack program fully integrates into the airport's noise monitoring system on a real-time basis, and it provides a more efficient and effective method for reviewing flight or noise information. And another thing that we have in place, so in partnership with your former supervisor, we're working on the development of the Fly Friendly Program. And the program calls for the voluntary participation because we can't really mandate, but we can really push hard on a voluntary basis, the general aviation jet operators and intend to incentivize them to reduce the impacts of these jet operations on the community. So it's not the commercial aircraft. It's not your Southwest Airlines or your United Airlines, but we have a lot of private aircraft, and some of them have some very beautiful, large jets like your Gulfstream Jets and your Lear Jets. And they're wonderful aircraft, but they're, they can be noisy. So we're encouraging them to be part of this Fly Friendly Program. And both of our fixed-based operators, both Clay Lacy and ACI Jet, are very much on board with this, and they've been great to work with. They're part of the Fly Friendly Group program itself, and they're going to help get that messaging out because it's their customers essentially that fly in and out of the FBOs that we really need to address those noise issues with and have them be participating voluntarily in this program. So the Fly Friendly Working Group that we have, it consists of aviation professionals as well as community members, so we've got a good mix. And the community here is not shy. They are very vocal, and I appreciate that. So it's never, you know, what are your thoughts? You know, let us try to guess what you're thinking of. They come right out and say, "We got jet noise. We've got to deal with this, got to deal with that." And it's been great because they're very direct and to the point, and we know what they want to have done. So to date, we've identified different options to reduce the impact on the community at large, including potential modifications to the noise abatement departure procedures. And we're also working through this program and awaiting FAA determination, the Federal Aviation Administration is FAA, and to look forward to the official launch of this program in the near future. So we've kind of guided it up to this point, and then we've got the airport staff that'll kind of take the lead with the community members and the working group and move this program forward. The General Aviation Improvement Program, or the GAIP, is in progress. And on the general aviation side, you'll, you must be aware that we're working on this improvement program. It's a long-term program in place at John Wayne Airport, and the program seeks to redefine and modernize the general aviation side of the airport, essentially all of the areas for non-commercial planes. So our FBOs, for instance, we have our fixed-based operators at the airport, and if you drive by the buildings, they are very, very old and in need of not just repair or refurbishment, but they need to be scraped and new buildings need to be put in place because they're not very energy efficient, and frankly, they're not very attractive. So while we're making other improvements at the airport, having the GA side at the airport with improvements will be, will go a long way, especially for the community. So John Wayne is home to nearly 500 private general aviation aircraft, and that includes the single and multi-engine aircraft, corporate jets, and helicopters as well. And did you know that the general aviation operations at the airport, it represents nearly 70% of the airport's total operations? A lot of people didn't know that statistic. The county's gone through a very robust process, which resulted in the collect, in the selection of our two fixed-based operators, ACI Jet and Clay Lacy Aviation. And then we have J's, which is sort of a, it's not quite as large, it's a limited service fixed-based operator. So we have the two large ones and then the one small one. So once this project gets underway, it will completely reimagine the general aviation side of the airport and ensure that the facilities match the world-class service that John Wayne Airport guests have come to know and love. And people don't think of John Wayne Airport as a large airport, but it received two years in a row, this is about three years ago, it received two years in a row the best large airport in the United States. And that was from Fortune Magazine and from Money Magazine. And people were calling our office and they're saying, "I just read John Wayne Airport got the best large airport of the year award, and it's the size of a pinhead. How could it be best large airport?" Because you think of LAX, you think of, you know, other large, large airports around the United States. But really, it's about throughput. It's about passenger count. And so we have over, I think, 11 million passengers a year right now that come through John Wayne Airport, and they all rated the airport as one of the best airports to fly into and fly out of in the United States. So, I mean, when you go through the airport, the restrooms are clean. We've got restaurants now that are coming back because of COVID. Some of them were shuttled for a while. We have new concessionaires that are coming in, and we're going to be opening up new airport lounges. I think the, the days of having those dedicated airline lounges are probably something in the past. And because our airport, you know, we only have the two spots right now, and it's American and United. But if you're not flying one of those two airlines, and we have a lot of other airlines at the airport, you're kind of out of luck. You don't have a lounge to go to. And now you've got the American Express escape lounges, which I love. And it doesn't matter what airline you're flying, you can go into one of those lounges. You just need an Amex card. But those kinds of multi-purpose lounges, I think, are going to be the wave of the future. And so we're planning on that for John Wayne Airport. And we're looking at adding different lounge space within the airport footprint, which I think is going to be great. And then another thing we're doing, we're going to be adding some restaurants that'll be right there at the glass overlooking the runways. So I think that's going to be another great new feature at the airport. So moving on to Harbor Patrol, I'd like to take a moment to give you a brief update on the county's Harbor Patrol operations. As you may know, the Orange County Sheriff's Department Harbor Patrol provides the around-the-clock law enforcement, marine firefighting, search and rescue, smuggling, interdiction, environmental and wildlife protection for 160 square miles of coastline and inland waterways of our three harbors. And I know somebody had asked me a question about smuggling and interdiction. What does that mean? You know, unfortunately, until we get our borders secure, we get folks that come not just on land but on sea and that shouldn't be here. And so our Harbor Patrol and the Coast Guard has been very effective in making sure that they intercept those kinds of craft out there in the waterways. The Harbor Patrol Bureau is headquartered in Newport Beach and works closely with local and federal government agencies, sharing information for the detection and prevention of suspected acts of terrorism. So I mean, they have homeland security duties and responsibilities. They have a lot of responsibility in the harbor. It's not just, you know, if a boat runs out of fuel and needs to get towed in, they tow the boat in. They have a lot of other responsibilities around the clock, and they're always looking for things. People don't think of, you know, terrorism on our waterways, but it could occur anywhere, and they need to be prepared at all times. So last year, they responded to 18,302 calls for service, and they conducted 312 rescues. The Harbor Patrol was the lead local agency for the 2021 oil spill in Huntington Beach. And we all remembered, you know, what pursued, what they had to pursue with regard to that and finding out the cause and working with all of the agencies involved, federal, state, and local as well with regard to the oil spill. They confirmed the presence of crude oil and identified where it was coming from because they had the helicopters get up in the air right away to determine where the oil was moving and the source of the oil. They notified the platforms, and they shut down the harbors to protect them from being damaged. So as you may recall, the recent downed helicopter crash that sadly claimed the life of a police officer, the Harbor Patrol was also the lead agency that headed the rescue efforts. And recently, Harbor Patrol apprehended a crazed individual who was ramming a stolen yacht into docks, boats, and bridges. And so before he could seriously injure someone, they were able to apprehend this individual. So, I mean, they never know what that 911 call is going to be, anything from an oil spill to a crazed individual with a boat. So a few weeks ago, a large commercial vessel carrying passengers to a local island ferry had a medical emergency, and again, Harbor Patrol stepped up and helped that individual. So the vessel turned around and it tried to return to Newport Beach. However, they lost all power, so catastrophic failure there, and they couldn't steer, and they didn't have an ability to stop. So they were in serious trouble. So they came dangerously close to crashing into the West Jetty. The Harbor Patrol was able to prevent the boat carrying 100 passengers from crashing while simultaneously rendering medical aid. So there's a lot of good work being done by our Harbor Patrol out there. Another project I'd like to talk about, so as Alberto mentioned, I am a big fan of public-private partnerships. You know, government does a lot of things very well, and we have 18,000 employees at the county. And when it comes to the infrastructure projects, we've always got a significant number of major infrastructure projects that are underway. Dana Point Harbor, Laguna Niguel City Center, Civic Center Master Plan, and so on. But we have a lot of county land. The county is the second-largest landowner to the Irvine Company. Most people don't know that. We have over 3,000 parcels of land. Some are vacant, some are, have structures on them that could have adaptive reuse. So we have a lot of different land holdings. And one that I've always been kind of attracted to is, and it wasn't in my district at the time, but I talked to the county supervisor that had the district at that point, that was Michelle Steele. She's now in Congress, but she was the second district supervisor when Newport Beach was in the second district. And I had talked to her, and I said, "Michelle, we've got this great parcel of land that's right on Newport Coast. What a great address. It's got a great view." And she said, "It's a landfill. What are you going to do with a dump?" And I said, "You know, it's been over 50 years, so you can actually develop it now. It's a dump, Lisa." I said, "No, let's send it out to RFP and see what we can do." Because the, the goal of all of these parcels of land that the county has, so for most of the, most of you who don't know how the funding mechanism works with the state, for every tax dollar we send to Sacramento, Orange County gets back about five cents. The average county gets back 17 cents. So we have to do more with less. So we have to be creative. When we've got all these parcels of land, I said, "Why don't we get them developed? We'll get long-term ground leases, and we'll give, get a revenue stream into the county." And so that's one thing that we're really pushing for the county, and I think it's going to be great for the residents because long-term, we're going to be getting in, you know, tens of millions, if not billions of dollars over the long term that can really help benefit the residents by pushing out greater levels of service or things to, that can benefit the county at large. So one of these parcels was the Coyote Canyon landfill. So for those of you who don't know where it is, it's right off of Newport Coast Drive and the 73 Toll Road, right at the top there by the Toll Road. And it's now, it's now able to be developed because it's been over 50 years, and it is a landfill. So you've got a lot of trash there that's buried. However, it can be developed. And so the site itself is about 361 acres, and it was operated as a landfill from 1963 to 1990. And it's been closed for many years. And since the landfill has been closed, OC Waste and Recycling has maintained the site to ensure regulatory compliance with the various environmental quality laws. And if you walk by the property, you would think it's just open space at this point. And it does present a lot of unique prospects for repurpose of that land and along with community recreational opportunities. So what we did was, I saw potential there. It's a great location, and I think there's some great development to be had. So I worked with the County Real Estate Department and OC Waste and Recycling, and I said, "Let's go ahead and solicit proposals to see what the best use for that land is." And so following an extensive process, we executed an option agreement with Tate Development. And their plan is to develop the property into an 18-hole golf course, which will also offer a golf course and driving range for Sage School because there is a golfing program there, and they don't really have anywhere close. And, you know, it's, it's too expensive for them to go and play at Pelican Hill, which is a beautiful course, but for high school kids, you know, they can't really afford that. So having something right across the street, too, that's affordable for the students will be great. So the plan is to develop with an 18-hole golf course, with a driving range and a golf practice facility, restaurant, meeting facility, public space, walking trails, and recreational areas. And then the firm is actively working with the city of Newport Beach on the entitlements for the project. And I think the city is really excited about this project, so it's a great partnership with all the stakeholders because every city needs to be compliant with RENA numbers, which is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And in the last cycle, unfortunately, there was a kind of a coup at SCAG, and the inland counties and LA County, they pushed a lot of their RENA numbers into Orange County and along the coastal areas in particular, from Huntington Beach down to San Clemente. So our RENA numbers that we couldn't even meet before went up further, and we've got to figure out how are we going to meet these numbers for affordable housing. So in dealing with RENA numbers, I know that the city and the developer have worked together. And included in the project is a number of affordable housing units that will help the city meet its RENA numbers. So it's, it's a project that's going to have a lot of great features in it, recreational opportunities, great for the community, and helping the city meet its RENA numbers. And it's going to be something that'll be great for the long term because for the county, we'll have a long-term lease with a developer, and we'll get a revenue stream into the county. So the project's been approved by the Board of Supervisors and is now moving forward. So if you start to see some development work up there, you'll know exactly what that is. So moving on to OC Parks, especially in the summer months, they're always very active in all of our cities and communities. So this Saturday, though, we have a lot happening in Newport Beach. May 7th is the Accessibility Day at the Bay, and the event is designed to introduce the deaf and hard-of-hearing children and their parents to the Back Bay and explore the area, learn about the bay's ecology, habitats, plants, animals, and engage on hands-on crafts and activities. And so it's recommended ages 6 through 14, and sign language interpreters will be on hand to support the deaf and hard-of-hearing participants. And then May 14th, a week later, we have Global Big Day at the Bay. So for birdwatching enthusiasts, you get to celebrate global at the Bay. So for birdwatching enthusiasts, you get to celebrate Global Big Day at the Bay on May 14. And last year, this international birdwatching event drew more than 51,000 people from 192 countries, which is phenomenal, because it's not just a matter of bringing all the people in for birdwatching. But after birdwatching, they'll walk the trails, they'll go to your restaurants, they'll go to Fashion Island and spend money. So it's really great for the community at large. And so we're hoping to break that record this year, because as we're pulling out of COVID, you know, for a while, people were hesitant to get out there in public and go to a lot of these public-facing events. But people now, I think, feel pretty comfortable. So this year, you're probably going to get well over 51,000 people there. The event is sponsored by the Cornell Lab, and this year, it'll take place in upper Newport Bay. No experience is necessary, and we have loner binoculars available on a first-come, first-served basis. We also have a full moon hike and total lunar eclipse edition on May the 15. So last but not least, this full moon hike will be complete with a total lunar eclipse on May 15. As you know, that doesn't happen very often. But when it does, you want to be able to take part in it. So participants will meet at the Peter and Mary Muth Interpretive Center for a walk around the bay. And when the moon rises, you'll be greeted with a total lunar eclipse that'll be in progress. If conditions are favorable, you'll also examine the moon through a telescope after the hike. So that sounds pretty cool to me. And I think a lot of members of the community will want to take part in that. All three events require pre-registration. So really important. To register, visit ocparks.com. Again, that's ocparks.com. So again, I don't want to take up all your time this morning. It's been a pleasure to be here today and love to represent Newport Beach in my new supervisory district. And with that, thank you for having me, and I would love to answer any questions that you have. You know, I've always got an open-door policy, and I love to answer questions. We'll start to my left.
Hi, thank you very much. It was great talk. You did a great job. Thank you. On the Coyote landfill, you mentioned affordable housing. What percent of it is affordable, and what percent would be market pricing?
You know, I don't know the exact breakdown, but I know there will be a substantial number of units that are going to meet the RENA numbers. And you, and you have to be within a certain range of affordability.
Okay. So it's not all affordable?
I know the majority, I think, are going to be affordable, if not all of them. They're, they're working through the project specifics right now with the city. And then they've also got to make sure the project pencil's out. So they are working through those numbers. But you will see a significant number of affordable units there.
And the soil is engineered, is there any for development, even though it's not a landfill?
It's going through that environmental review process. So that will be part of the, the SEQA process is part of the environmental review. There'll be an EIR. They'll probably do a full EIR as opposed to a negative, mitigated negative deck, just because of the project being on a landfill site. So, you know, they have those two options. They're going to go for, I think, the full EIR.
Yeah. I think part of the site was not landfill. It's actually never excavated. That's where it'll develop. So the golf course will be over the portions of landfill that it covers.
Yeah. It, it's a fairly large parcel. It's about 360 some acres there. But it's not wholly, right, it's not wholly landfill. But you've got some vacant land, and then you've got some escha with some endangered habitat off to the side that will not be disturbed. And then you've got just vacant land, and then you've got the landfill property itself.
The entire area is within the city limits now, or does it have to be annexed?
No, it's all within the city limits.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming it's a public golf course?
That's a good question. I think, you know, I would think it would be a, a public golf course, because that's, I think what they had mentioned it was planned to be, was public as opposed to private. Yeah.
And you know who's developing the golf course? I have golf courses in my town.
Okay. Well, Tate Development is the development team for the entire project. So they would be developing the golf course, along with everything else. Okay. Yes.
And what's the timeframe on developing that? And also, just a quick note, that if you know what the tuition is for Sage Hill School, those kids can afford to claim golf.
I know Sage is a very expensive private school. But when you talk about proximity as well, I, I think having, you know, Coyote Canyon, the landfill is so close to Sage, that just the proximity for the kids to literally go across the street is a big benefit there.
My main question is timeframe, because this talk has been going on for years.
Yes. Talk has been going on for years about doing something with that particular property, and that's why I really wanted to fast-forward it. And we got it out to RFP. We've got somebody now as a development team. So they are, I don't know what the exact timeframe is, because they still have to get a number of approvals. They're still working with the city of Newport Beach. They've got to get permits. They've got to go through the SEQA process. They've got to have the EIR done. So there are a number of steps. It's not, it's not a 50-year process, but it's probably at least a, a 10-year process to really get things moving along in earnest. But it'll be a great project when it's finished.
Another question, a little bit off track here, is regarding, sure, cities don't do it at all. So is there any discussion going on at all?
Well, so from the county perspective, the county can really, we have jurisdiction over the unincorporated areas. So we have jurisdiction over, say, La Dara Ranch and Ranch on Mission Viejo, which are unincorporated county. And, and eBay, and, you know, Emerald Bay and Laguna Beach. But when it comes to cities, it's really local control. And so you've got to look to, to your local government. So your city officials, your city elected officials. Those would be the individuals that you really want to talk to, specific to, say, Newport Beach. I mean, the county has some overarching things that we could do, but really, on, on a specific level, as far as number of permits and permits restrictions, use, proximity, concentration, things like that, we don't get involved at that micro level. That would be at your local level here with your local officials.
Hi, my name's Steve McNally, and my main focus is mental health. I'm on a county appointed to give over that land and make it available for some of the state minors available.
Well, a couple of different things. You can work through the healthcare agency and work through our county real estate department. And if you've got an interest in a particular parcel, flag it to their attention about the need and the use of a parcel. What they can do is they can send it out to a quick RFP. And, and this goes for any parcel in the county. And so one thing, because we have so many parcels, and the county was sending out these parcels one at a time. And when I found out we had 3,000, I said, that's going to take forever. So what we did was, we had a developer's symposium a couple of years ago, and we're getting ready to do another one in the fall. And so at the developer's symposium, what we did was, we, we contacted all of the major players in the county, all the developers, the title companies, the lending institutions, the contractors, subcontractors, everybody related to land use and planning, architects, and so on, and brought them, invited them, and we had literally, we, not, it wasn't sold out, but it was, we had 220 seats, and they were all taken. And it was phenomenal, because we brought in all of these folks into our county meeting room, and we showed them on the big screen, here are all of our parcels around the county, in and out of the county, because some of them are in the flood zones that are outside of the county, like in Chino, et cetera. And let them know, here are all of our parcels. You can use our little GIS mapping system, and you can find out and zero in on a particular parcel. It'll tell you where it's located, the zoning, how big it is, if it's in a city or an unincorporated area. And it'll also tell you if you, there are opportunities for things like opportunity zones. There are state and federal opportunity zones, and it gives you that overlay. So if you've got a county parcel, and you, and it's in an opportunity zone, you just hit the jackpot if you want to develop. So depending on the type of project you want to bring forward, great tax incentives and opportunities to, to really capture a greater level of income when you develop that parcel. So those are some of the things that, you know, we are working on. And we'll do that again in the fall with another developer's symposium. So I'll be engaged in that.
Did you invite regular people? Does that make sense?
We did not, because we have limited capacity. And we, you know, in the room, we have a capacity for about 220, and we had about 225. There was standing room in the back.
The reason why I ask, and it's not to be, it's just a comment, is when everybody have a chance to chat with you at some point, thank you.
Okay. And the person in my office who works on mental and behavioral health would be Nicole Garcia. So definitely contact her. And you make a really good point. So, and our project that we have is different than Haven for Hope. It's a very different kind of, you know, project. It's apples and oranges with our B-Well campus. So mental and behavioral health is something that's really important to our county in dealing with the homeless population. But also, just because of COVID, and just in general, people live stressful lives these days, and there is a lot of mental and behavioral health issues that have been popping up. And so we created a mental health wellness hub. It's one of its, kind of first of its kind, the way it was structured. But it, it's open to the public at large, and you could actually be a homeless person, or you can have the best PPO health insurance. And all 3.2 million people in Orange County are eligible to go. It only has 96 beds. So we're going to have an expanded campus in Irvine, and then another campus up in North County eventually. And the great thing about this, it's, again, public-private partnership. So the county put in money, and CalOptima put in money, which is our county organized health system. So we don't have a county hospital. We have CalOptima. And CalOptima serves the low-income population in the county. And again, people think, oh, County of Orange, you must have four people in CalOptima. We have almost a million members in CalOptima. Almost one-third of our population now is a member of CalOptima. And then we had three hospitals that put in $4 million each. And people, they say, well, why would the hospitals contribute to your county mental health hub? Well, when you think about a 911 caller, when someone needs to take someone that they love to get treated for a mental health crisis, most people end up in the ER. And that's not the place to take them, because they're sitting there for sometimes hours on end or days on end. And so having the ability to take them to the mental health wellness hub is, is a great thing. And it offloads the ERs. And so the money that they invested from the hospital perspective into this campus, they more than made up for that in the first year. So.
One last question, I think.
Okay.
So you've talked a lot about the airport, and I've been hearing, oh, I guess, rumors, just to talk about maybe extending the runways or paving the ends of the runways. Do you have any information about that, or?
Okay.
Is that true or not true? I don't want to...
Well, so, and it's, it's a bit of a dilemma. And, you know, and like all things, they can get political. And it's about messaging and educating the public. So there are a lot of newer, quieter, larger aircraft with less emissions, which are phenomenal. But our runway doesn't accommodate that, because we're at 5,700 feet on our runway. If you could extend the runway, and it would still be in the footprint, because, you know, you can't, you've got the freeway, you have Bristol, you have campus, and you have MacArthur. So the freeway, the airport's not ever going to get any bigger. We have a defined footprint. But if you reconfigure directionally, and you extend the runway a little bit by paving, we can go from 5,700 feet to 6,200 feet. So we need that extra 500 feet. And then you can bring in those new, larger, more-capacity, quieter aircraft, less emissions. But it's a matter of messaging that to the public at large, because the public hears, you're extending the runway! You're making the airport bigger! So it would have to be a major campaign. But I can tell you that these new aircraft are, they're not whisper-quiet, but they are a lot quieter. They hold more passengers, and you would have fewer flights. But it's a matter of messaging that to the public. So, you know, I won't be doing that during my term, because there's, it's a long-term campaign, is what it is, to make sure that you get the public to understand what you're trying to do and agree to the concept. So it, you know, when you think about it logically, you think, gosh, I'd love to get the newer, quieter, you know, aircraft in there and have fewer flights. But by the same token, we don't want to alarm the public by, you know, the extending the runways, and they, they don't know what that means. So it's a long-term educational campaign before you go from point A to point B. But there has been some discussion about that. It is possible to do that, absolutely. And if you're interested, you know, talk to our new airport director. All right. Well, again, thank you so much for having me. Really appreciate your time today. Call me if you have any questions, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. To close us out, Steve Rosansky. I feel like Ed McMahon.
Yay!
All right?
You got, I got to give you a bigger role here, Alberto. I don't know. Thank you, Lisa. Excellent talk. And we're fortunate to have Lisa today, because she's giving a huge talk today at lunch, her State of the Fifth District down in Laguna Niguel, which I'll be there for that as well. So all good information, and it's been recorded, so you can watch it playback on NewportBeach.com. We've got a few events coming up. I'll just quickly go through them. So if you're a young professional, I see one over there, and maybe a couple others. We have our wine tasting experience at the Winery Restaurant next Tuesday for our Navigate Young Professionals group. It's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. If you're interested in doing some intensive networking, we have our business lunch. It's going to be at Fleming's this month on May 18, and that's from 11:30 to 1:30. And to finish up the month, we just had a great mixer. If you've never been to Gracias Madre Restaurant, you got to go. As a vegetarian, I wouldn't normally go to a vegetarian restaurant, but the food was really good, really good. And they, they treated us really well. It's probably one of the top three mixers we've had in the nine years that I've been with the Chamber. But this month, we're going to be at Bayside Restaurant, which is another great place, great food. That's May 26, from 5:30 to 7:30. If you're a Chamber member, though, show up at 5 o'clock, because we're going to have the last mixer, well, the May mixer is always our annual meeting, where we'll be voting in our new board of directors. And I have to have 5% of the membership there. So that works out to about 33 members in order to have a quorum. And we vote on the new members, so that's from 5:00 to 5:30. So if you show up early, you can help me have a quorum. And who knows, maybe the bar might be open. I don't know, for people who show up early. So I'm not guaranteeing that, but, but we'll see. So, and then next month, Wake Up Newport, I will not be here. So Alberto, wherever he went, he, did he leave?
Yeah.
Oh, see, he left. I was giving him instructions. He will be in charge of the whole meeting. I'll be in New York at my niece's wedding, so I'll miss that one. We don't have the speaker yet, but I'm sure we'll have somebody good. And that's all I have. So looking forward to seeing you all this summer. Our barbecue series starts in June. It's always the third Friday in June at our offices, from 4:30 to 6:00. And usually, it bleeds over a little bit. So, and we got a lot of exciting things to be doing there this summer at our office, and that'll be in June, July, and August. So looking forward to seeing you. If you have any questions, call us at the office. And you can always find out about these events and more at NewportBeach.com. Have a great rest of your week. Thank you.